Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of amendments to the future land use element and livable communities element of the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. The Board will also hold the second and final public hearing for two related Land Development Code amendments, and the Board will consider and vote on the adoption of the plan amendments and the Land Development Code amendments. We're having a hybrid meeting with two of the commissioners appearing virtually, and we will do, if we could ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Chair Cam?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I will recognize Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission, who will provide an introduction to tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. We're pleased to be with you tonight as you consider adoption of these plan amendments and Land Development Code amendments. This is the culmination of quite a bit of work on the part of the entire team and the community bringing this to you tonight. I want to just take a moment to say thank you to all of the folks who've been involved because it really has been quite the collaborative effort. The changes that will be reviewed tonight, most of those are the result of the great teamwork we've had with the Development Services team to make sure that the Land Development Code and the plan amendments are clear and implementable based on the direction you gave us at Trans Middle. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay Collins to review the first RP2 amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Zornita. Again, my name is Jay Collins. I'm with the Planning Commission staff. With me tonight-
I'm sorry, I think we're having some trouble hearing you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me now?
Better, better.
Yes, ma'am. Again, my name is Jay Collins. I'm with the Planning Commission staff. With me tonight is Mr. Jared Schneider, the consultant on this project from Tim Lee Horn. I'm going to go through a little bit of some of the changes that have occurred since the Trans Middle back on August the 5th. So basically, that's what we'll do, is just go through the changes. We will not go through an entire presentation of all of the proposed language, just those changes. A little bit more of the housekeeping for those folks who are following this at home. Get this to go into the slideshow. Sorry about that. There we go. Who are following this at home. Again, these are the orange page, orange cover page, and then at the top of that page, it should say "Adoption" from an October date. So you have the adoption package, and you also have the Trans Middle package to show you some of the differences between the two. Again, tonight, this is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, HCCPA 2011. This is the future land uses element for the Residential Plan 2, that is, the adoption hearing, and then the accompanying Land Development Code amendment with that to implement it. So where are we? We're talking about the RP2 land use within the Rural Service area. The pink area that you see here is the BOMM Community Plan, and then within that area, that salmon color, is RP2, and then to the north, more of a tan color, that's also RP2 lands. These became a BOMM Village Plan area, as well as a North Plan area. A little bit of where we've been, we've been at this for about 18 months. We've had over 100 meetings between elected and appointed officials, community stakeholders, staff is what Ms. Zornita spoke of with all of the work that we've done with DSD. These meetings have been in person, they've been virtual, and they've been hybrid. There's also been four mailed notices to all property owners within the study area. There have been large signs that have also gone out to discuss or to promote those meetings that were mentioned in those letters, and there have also been emails that have been sent, other signs that have been sent throughout the planning project. So a little recap from August 5th, the Trans Middle hearing. The community engagement, there was a request by the Board of County Commissioners to have an additional meeting, and some of the items that the Board spoke of that night that then for us to speak to the community about, specifically some of the uses within neighborhood centers, housing types, as well as the larger lots that you might have out there, community benefits. There was a lot of conversation with the Board about community benefits. Some of those benefits were moved from one tier to another tier, other benefits were removed. Again, the Trans Middle packet that went to DEO showed all of those changes. There was also some conversations about the buffering. Again, this is a sliding scale buffer system, but there was not a sliding scale if you were a private property owner adjacent to ELAP property. That was a set 250 feet, and also at that time, it was those properties that were targeted for ELAP purchase. So we'll talk a little bit about that. Mobility, again, the desire for stronger language particularly on gates, and there was also some conversation about non-residential building elements to update some of those facades and some of the other elements of building design. So out of that conversation that the Board had with staff on August the 5th, an online survey went out, basically so that we could start having that conversation with the public ahead of having a meeting on September 15th. So that meeting on September 15th followed up from that survey and asked questions specific to the large lots, to the buffering, and also some of the community benefits. At that meeting, staff having already discussed with county staff on some of the ELAP, how to change already for the community to actually remove that buffer from those properties that were not already acquired by the county and keep it on those properties that had been acquired by the county. So in your packet today, there is a 250-foot buffer on those property owners who are adjacent to acquired ELAP lands, but if those lands are targeted for acquisition by the county, that goes back to the normal sliding scale. The large lots, there was a lot of conversation on the large lots, some movement back and forth, but there was not a consensus, again, on the large lots. There was some conversation, again, about alleyways, and in this with the rear-loading lots. There was a good conversation where some of the members of the community were asking whether or not rear-loaded lots on a 50-foot lot actually got some of the things they wanted, and some other members in that group actually said, "We shouldn't have the rear-loaded lots to begin with." Again, there is not a change in that policy. It is still the same policy going forward with the rear-loaded lots. So a few more of the changes specific to HCCPA 2011. There are now two community meetings that would be required for development up to two units to the acre within the RP2. This is coming out of the change that occurred in Wy Mama, and we wanted these two to be the same. Basically, to put it easily, you would have one community meeting prior to submitting an application, and you would have another community meeting prior to there being any action that is taken. That's an easy way to say it. It is much more specific than that, but it's an easy way to say it. It's also streamlined and clarified the intent of some of the objectives and some of the other policies within the future land use, as well as a variety of community benefits. CBOs also, the community benefit options, can now be used twice if they are demonstrated to meet the requirement twice. For the Land Development Code piece, again, Amendment 21-0288, a little bit of spelling, grammar, and punctuation, just cleaning it up, also reorganization and clarification. So while there seems to be a lot of changes in that document, a good bit of it is simply reorganization. One thing that is new, and again, this was put forward in the first couple of pages of those packets, are definitions added to Article 12, as well as new uses in 611, Section 611, for those definitions. Those definitions and the uses that regulate them are specific only to WVR2 and RP2. They are not definitions nor uses for countywide, only for development within these land uses. There's also some changes that we're about to talk about with neighborhood centers, housing types, buffering, screening, roadways, and some of the non-residential building elements, again, which goes to some of those facade improvements. Within the neighborhood center, again, they are required to designate one or more of those following uses at 1.5% of the site. So you're not required to have it, but you are required to designate it. The requirement to have it may come into a timing policy or anything else, but not every single property would be required to build. Again, you can do retail uses, office uses, support uses, and what is not permitted, coming out of the conversation from the Trans Middle, are gas stations and drive-throughs. They would not be permitted in neighborhood centers. They also are not incentivized through the community benefit option in other areas within BOMM. There's also some changes in the block pattern and multimodal connectivity. So the blocks now can be skinny blocks, or they could be fat blocks. It basically works with that idea of what the prevailing development type that the developer might be putting forward, or that the community is looking for out of walkability. So some of the buffers, we had already talked about this. So now the 250-foot buffer would be required on the neighborhood primary entrance with smaller lots and where the project abuts, ELAP-acquired lands or scenic corridor. So those lands that are targeted for acquisition are no longer required to have a 250-foot buffer. They would move into the sliding scale. The perimeter lots, also half-acre or larger, have a 25-foot vegetative buffer, and then again, as we talked about, some of those sliding scale requirements changing a little bit with that buffer, that landscape that goes in it. Substandard roadway section added. Again, this is for public and private roadways to be required to make improvements of the development in the timing, so that impact of the proposed development would be improved prior to or concurrent with a phase of the development. And with that, the public hearing structure, again, A1 is the CPA amendment, A1A is the Land Development Code amendment. August the 5th, the Board found this to be, the Board transmitted this to DEO, and we just wanted to go ahead and let you know that the Department of Economic Opportunity had no objections to HCCPA 2011. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So at this time, I will now open the public hearing on the amendment to the future land use element. We're going to, as well, do the related amendment to the Land Development Code, and as we did before, I think the wise thing, rather than two, three-minute times, and since we're combining them, it makes usually more sense in terms of how people speak and address these and understand them, that I'm suggesting, and see if the Board is in agreement. This is what we did last time, a four-minute per speaker.
I'll move to allow four minutes per speaker, and Madam Chair, that's to address both the Comprehensive Plan portion and the LDC portion?
Yes, so they don't have another chance on this. Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, to have four minutes per person. Can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Cam?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Okay, so I'm just going to go down the list, and if anybody's on it twice on these two, one on each one, I'll just, I'll be calling on you just once. And we will start with Reed Fishback. Is he present?
......... Hello?
Hello.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I really do enjoy the process of meeting with people to work on solutions, and we have had a lot of really good conversation. I do not believe the proposed document this evening reflects the discussions during our community meetings. You know, one example is that it was resolved on September 15th to not require 50-foot lots to be rear-loaded. This was one of the trade-offs for eliminating 40-foot lots from the plan, along with many other concessions. Rear-loaded lots are on the community benefit list. How are they a community benefit if they are required? It is documented in the meeting minutes that this was discussed, but the plan was not updated. This was brought to staff's attention. The current version of the plan has an enormous amount of changes that have not been reviewed or discussed by the community, landowners, or developers. You know, we now have requirements for eight-foot paver sidewalk that you will not see in any prior version of the plan. You know, the 250-foot required ELAP buffer was brought to the commission's attention multiple times, including the August 5th hearing. You know, the property owners are willing to agree to a 50-foot buffer, which is consistent with the rest of East Hillsborough County. You know, just as a reminder, a landfill setback is 200 feet, and staff originally proposed a setback larger than a landfill. I understand that many of you are ready to be done with the changes to RP2, but please respect the process and the time we have all put into this project. Tonight's version versus the July 27th version is very difficult to read, and I do not think it is proper to have so many changes three days before the final adoption hearing. I truly believe that the community, the landowners, and the developers are willing to put the time in to finish the process rather than approve the document as drafted this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have listed is Bear McCullough.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear us this evening. My name is Bear McCullough. I live at 13719 Bearsden Trail in BOMM. Like I said, I always appreciate the time the county and the community has put into discussing this proposal. It's been a long process, and we've worked hard to get to where we're at. My family's been living here for somewhere between 50 and 60 years. We are in the cattle business here in BOMM, and our property does fall in to the RP2 area. I have to be honest with you, I truly expected more than just one meeting to happen on this since August 5th, and it didn't. And that happened to be an evening that I couldn't make it, and I was waiting for another one that never occurred. This is an extremely important issue for our community and the landowners here, yet many of the changes that have been included in this last-minute proposal have never been discussed or reviewed during any of the meetings, and honestly, I was blindsided by some of the things in the document. I feel that the proposed changes are being forced on us without the proper process. I have no idea where some of the stuff came from, and I feel taken back that these items were added without the process that we've been going through the last 18 months. I believe, I don't believe it's complete. I'd like to see some more time. There's been things that we have agreed on as a community that aren't even in there. The draft doesn't show those changes or those agreements, and I would propose that we go back and look at this a little longer and let's get it right. It's disrespectful to us, it's disrespectful to you, disrespectful to the commission for us to put this much time into a project and then just, with three days to go, throw it together and see if it'll fly. That's not how I run things here. That's not how I run my businesses, and I don't believe that's the way that we intended this to happen, and I think, I think it's worth another look. Thank you again for your time.
And next speaker is William O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, can you please turn down the volume in the background?
Is this William O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien, can you hear us?
Oh.
And next speaker is- They don't seem to be hearing us. Mr. O'Brien, can you hear us, please? Yes. Mr. O'Brien, you have to turn down the volume in the background, please. Hi, can you hear us?
Mr. O'Brien is right here.
Okay, he's called upon to speak, and please turn down the volume in the background.
Okay. William O'Brien?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello there?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. I came to the library so that this could be easy, and it never is.
It happens.
Okay. My name's Bill O'Brien. I can't see you anymore, so I'm just going to speak, and when you want me to stop, tell me so. First of all, my name's Bill O'Brien. I live at 17050 Overman Turned Road in BOMM, Florida. I've lived in BOMM all my life, 60-some-odd years, 67 years. I appreciate the efforts that's been undertaken by the county and by the community, and special note, I thank Jay, Jay Collins, Marion Abrams, who have both been very helpful in working with us to try to facilitate input from the community on both sides, on the community side and on the developer side. Overall, the process has been, I guess the word I'll use is brutal. It's been extremely inefficient. We made little progress from time to time, and I was on a number, multiple, probably 10 or 15 or more phone calls and conference calls, meetings at the park, meetings in Wichita County, et cetera, and it seemed like every time we met, we were rehashing what we'd already decided on, and wasted a lot of time, and the overall bureaucracy that we encountered through the process was, it just became a brutal effort, I'll just be honest with you. However, I think we did make some progress. In the very beginning, when we started this process, the community put together a vision that we had, and we recognized we had to concede on some of our issues, and we realized that there'd be a compromise that would come out of the overall process, but for the most part, we requested that the series of supporting infrastructure items must either be in place or already approved and ready for implementation to determine that the area is ready for development. These items must be deemed ready before approvals can be made, and it would include that the minimum local and connecting roadways must be deemed sufficient or plans in place for improvement to support the proposed development traffic increase. That infrastructure should have been, should be completed before development could begin. Schools will be available, water service or sewer service would be in place to support the increased development. Law enforcement would be provided, fire and emergency services support would be available, and other citizen support services like libraries, access and government support services, et cetera, would be an element of the planned development. Unfortunately, we've realized very little of those, if not none, of those objectives. We asked and we worked to increase lot sizes, but we were trying to manage the urban expansion and retain some of the rural character in BOMM community and BOMM area and what's left of Hillsborough County. I believe we made very little progress. We made some, but I don't think we made real progress. We did get some larger lots, slightly larger. However, I believe if the county would let us, would let us facilitate a meeting with developers, we could probably come up with a much better plan and let us lead it. So-
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, I'm done. I do appreciate the effort, and I believe we have a reasonable start. I believe we need to go back and work harder and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Jamie Franklin.
Commissioners, county staff, I want to thank you for all your hard work. We're proud of you for getting a lot done. One thing I want to talk about, because I've heard complaints about the backload lots or alleys. There's complaints about violence, people running around stealing things. It doesn't seem like it's a good idea. Just my opinion. The other thing is this Mahapa, Asapa, or whatever it is, it seems like that's covering half the state over here. Why isn't it just covering the BOMM area? Because if we have a development coming here, and they're going to improve the road or whatever, we want our roads improved, not in some other part of the county. And I'm going with the farmer now. There seems to be no rush to close this thing off, because maybe we have not done enough homework. There you go again, that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Buddy Harwell.
Good evening, Commissioners. Buddy Harwell here, BOMM, Florida. Just want to touch on what Mr. Fishbox said about the rear-loaded lots. We did discuss that at the last meeting and decided that that would not be a benefit for the community, so, you know, we don't have no problem with it being removed at all. With the Mahapa, it's a good idea. I think it's probably going to be the only way we get any infrastructure fixed out here because I doubt the county's going to come out here anytime soon. We just want to make sure that it's done above and beyond the regular requirements that are proposed for the development to start with, and maybe there's some way we can do, like within a certain, you know, half-mile or mile of the area development, and maybe, you know, a portion of the road, so many feet have to be done for every 500 houses, you know, then it goes up to every 1,000 houses. With the large lots, it's definitely, we want larger lots, as most of you are aware of. There's still, I don't think nothing in the plan that designates a certain, a minimum percentage that has to be half-acre or larger. That's something that we've been pushing from the start, and we'd like to see. I don't know if we've talked about TDRs, but of course, I don't like the TDRs from rural to rural. If you go from rural to USA, that's fine with me. Infrastructure timeliness for the development should be a must. We all know we're getting short on water and everything else. I know we're supposed to have enough next year, but what happens when we get to next year? We're still a year or two behind on that. But, yeah, we could all still stand to sit down and talk about this a little bit more, work out some things. Just a matter of if we actually get something done. We've done a lot of talking in a year and a half. I think we should be a lot further along than where we are, but I'll leave it up to you to decide that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Pamela Gomez?
I believe Pamela Gomez, oh, you know what, they may have just called back here. Pamela Gomez, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Gomez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Camp and County Commissioners. I'm Pamela Gomez, and I serve as Executive Director of the Wy Mama Community Development Corporation. The Wy Mama CDC champions meaningful change aligned with the needs of the Wy Mama community. Our work focuses on three strategic priorities: educational, economic, and housing opportunities.
Miss Gomez, before we go further, right now, we're dealing with the BOMM, the RP2, and I just, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or if you'd wait. We're going to have a second public hearing. We're going to go through Wy Mama and talk about Wy Mama, and then you'll have four minutes then. Would you prefer to do that?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll just call on you after we do the Wy Mama presentation, and we'll keep to BOMM here. I just didn't know- I just didn't know if you also wanted to address Baum. But, so how about if we'll, we'll wait on calling on you?
That would be great. We're just having, we're at the library and we're just having some reception issues here.
Sure. Understood.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Tonya Jackson?
Tonya Jackson has not called in.
Okay. Gil Martinez, he may also, Mr. Martinez, you may also want to speak during the second segment to Wyomama?
Mr. Martinez, are you there? I believe Mr. Martinez may have disconnected. Ms. Martinez, are you there?
Wyomama?
That's correct. Ms. Martinez, are you there?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I would like to speak on the Wyomama agenda items.
Right. Mr. Martinez? Right, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
At, at this time, we're talking about Baum and the, the Baum Comprehensive Plan Amendment and LDC. Would you like to wait until we do the Wyomama presentation and then address that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, then we'll, we're gonna go through that presentation after and we'll call on you at that time, okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Uh huh. Liz Gutierrez? Ms. Gutierrez?
I believe, she is going to also speak for Wyomama.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just want to make sure. Georgina Romero? Romero?
Yes?
And?
Go ahead, Georgina, with your public comment.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. My, my name is Georgina Romero and I work for Enterprise Latinas in Wyomama as a family-to-family manager.
Ms. Romero? You may, we are doing a second presentation on Wyomama and having a public hearing on that. Would you like to wait until that public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll call on you at that time. It's gonna be a little while, but we're gonna get through this and then we're gonna do Wyomama. And then I have James Selvey?
Good evening. James Selvey, 20925 Dean Road. I am a resident of Wyomama, however, I want to speak on this issue. I've worked in land management and agriculture on industrial land for twenty-five years. Many of the private landowners utilize controlled burns and don't require neighbors to have more than a standard fifty-foot setback. Setbacks are not required per Florida Forest Service for prescribed burns, but it's required that there be adequate fire breaks at the burn site and sufficient personnel to handle it. A fire break is typically fifteen to twenty feet wide. There's no reason to have such an extensive setback on private property. Sites are not burned every year, typically about every three to four years, so, and sometimes as far out as eight. Why do we need a permanent setback for an event that'll happen every four to eight years, three to eight years? Hillsborough County now owns a hundred square miles in the county. Why is the only land use category that this is being proposed on? The required minimum should either be fifty foot, which is the largest residential setback in the county, or removed totally. Please don't make it a disadvantage to own land next to ELAP because this is what it sounds like. Appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Sumner? Joe Sumner?
All right, good evening. My name is Joe. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Joe Sumner. I currently live at 15015 Heritage Trail Lane in Baum. I currently live on my family's ranch with my wife and my two kids. As previously, previously mentioned, my family sold some property to the ELAP program in the late nineties. I work in the environmental and land management industry throughout the state of Florida, including Hillsborough County. My property is one thousand three hundred and twenty feet wide and three thousand six hundred and forty feet long. I share three thousand six hundred and forty feet of fence line currently with ELAP. I appreciate ELAP and the planning commission trying to propose a solution, but I brought this up multiple times before today, throughout the process, and just received the current proposal hours before this hearing. The suggested proposal is not acceptable to me or my family or my children. Currently in RP2, there's no setback against ELAP. We have proposed a fifty-foot setback as required ELAP, but because of this, it would be consistent with other land use categories currently in Hillsborough County. The, the current sites that ELAP has adjoining my property has many opportunities to maintain the property in other ways, such as mechanical or if, if a fire, the prescribed fire is of issue on other sites throughout the state of Florida, they, they maintain these, these fire lines through mechanical means. I think that would be a more, a more proficient practice to have than for myself to have a two hundred and fifty-foot setback. My, you know, my, I believe the setbacks would, larger than the fifty-foot, would be taking, you know, just, just basically just taking it from my family. And I, I just, I don't agree with that one, but thank you for your time. And I would appreciate that the current drafted language be removed from the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. George Nieman?
Yes, good evening.
Go ahead with your public comments, sir.
Good. I live in Dover and I am not in the immediate vicinity of the plan that's in discussion, but I would just like to share as a resident my views on WRP2 and the Wyomama residential plan. I do not support any land use classification of the, of RP2. So, I don't support these changes and I would suggest that I, I would appreciate it if the commission, the BACC, and the planning commission would consider doing away with RP2 because I think it allows incursion of densities that are inappropriate for rural lands. And we've had too much of, even in my area, where we have a border from what is considered urban to rural. We have high density right up until the border. Buffering is not honored and we don't really have a transition. And we're getting to the point where there's a lot of incursion of higher densities into the rural areas. So, I would suggest that you cancel this and let's go back to the drawing board. Let's do away with RP2. And let's go back to the densities that we should have in the rural sector. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alfred, you're, you're finished, correct?
Yes.
Alfred Brunner?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name's Alfred Brunner. I live at 15006 Carlton Lake Road. I've addressed your body a number of times with regards to development in our area and land use and planning. I want to highlight five topics, echoing many of what folks before me have said. First and foremost, I would offer, I don't see an assessment of criteria that says the timing is right to allow development. Right now, we're running up against a one billion dollar plus deficit in our infrastructure, including everything from schools, roads, first responders, and we don't have enough, let alone water and other things. I don't think enough is done to accommodate our hurricane evacuation plans. So, it is critical that we have something to talk to the timing about these developments. Just like the previous gentleman said about RP2, it's being used to put high density in rural areas that don't support it, don't want it. We came out here to have greenery and not asphalt, concrete, and buildings. And there's a recent article that some of that deficit is up to two billion dollars now. We're getting further and further behind. Something needs to change. So, I kind of blended those two topics about, about deficit. The second one is, and this is the one rare spot where the current citizens and the developers, I think, actually kind of agree. The county has to do their part. We're too far behind and we're getting further behind. So, the county has to keep doing things. We can't keep putting schools on main roads and street roads that slows everything down even further. Point number three, large lots. Well, we got some large lots and that's an improvement over them trying to put forty-foot lots in rural areas, which is smaller than what they're allowing to do inside their urban zone in some places. But, for instance, the Baum community plan that we worked out with the county wants one house per five acres, non-clustered, and it's being ignored. So, there's that. Point number four, community benefit. Just as Buddy had highlighted earlier, the benefit to the community must be open to where the whole community can get to it, not just in a small area and neighborhood of that development. And it must be beyond the bare minimum requirements that they have to do already, or is it county requirement? Point number five in my last point, backloaded lots. In the research that I've done recently and talks with other commissioners, other developers, and some of my fellow citizens in the community, we don't see a benefit to having backloaded lots along with the issues of just more roadway to maintain, more problems to be caused because it's out of sight, out of mind. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Noel Lacor?
Hello, good afternoon or evening.
Hello.
My name is Noel Lacor and, I'm sorry, there was some feedback, we had to fix it. Yes, my name is Noel Lacor and I have three comments to make. So, the MAFSA is a good benefit for the community as a whole. My concern is that the agreed-upon improvements will occur outside of Baum. Baum is located inside the MAFSA Benefit District Number Five, which is a very large district. I can see where improvements just outside of Baum could be a community benefit, but not almost thirty miles away. Maybe the benefit could be limited to the planned area and possibly just outside the planned area. It's an allocation that would benefit the residents of Baum. Second is the rear loaded lots. They are not a benefit. They don't benefit the community, they don't benefit the developer, and they definitely don't benefit the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. For those who don't know, the alleys are county roads and they are additional secondary roads that are required to be maintained by the county and county taxpayer money. The community farms, with that, my concern is that it may be too limiting. For example, under prohibited uses, it lists plant farms, but then plant farms are not defined within the plan. And also, I agree with many of the other callers tonight that the plan is not quite ready. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I believe that I have everyone on my list for the Baum community plan unless I hear anything else. There's, I'm assuming no one?
You are correct, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
You are correct.
Okay, okay, okay. With that then, we'll close the public part of this hearing and we will move to board discussion. And I see no hands raised at this time. Oh, it's not coming up on mine. I don't know why. Okay. Commissioner White, you're recognized. Okay, yes, nothing is coming up on my board here. I don't know why.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if I may, I'd like to have the floor four successive times. One is, or the first three would be to make three motions and then the fourth time would be to just make my general comments. So, the first motion that I want to address is, it seems as if the landowner interests and the community interests are in agreement that they don't want rear loading for the fifty-foot lots. So, I'm gonna move that we remove that both as a requirement and as a community benefit.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And I guess I'm just going to have to ask because I'm not sure why nothing is coming up on my screen. You might want to check here. But is there anyone else who would like to speak to this, speak now? Okay. Hearing no other, and I would say, I, I agree, I thought it actually, actually had been removed. So, I was a little confused when people were talking about it. But with that, we'll do a roll call vote?
Sheriff Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Yes? And so we have a, the, the vote was?
Seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move Commissioner White.
Okay, thank you. So, for the second motion, I, I want to cue that up by asking staff a question. What is this about the, the eight-foot paver sidewalk requirement?
Jay, would you please answer that or would that be better directed to Development Services?
I can certainly look through the draft. I'm trying to think of that eight-foot, unless that eight-foot is something that is within the neighborhood center. I don't know if, it might be where the eight-foot came from. I don't know if Mr. Schneider might know of that.
Is there a requirement that it be constructed of pavers, though?
I, I do not believe so. I don't, I don't think the actual sidewalk materials were discussed, but Mr. Schneider, I don't know if you might know of that?
Sure, I'll drop in here. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm running a little bit of background noise. Okay, yeah, and if, if staff has anything else to add. Right now, the way it's worded is there's eight-foot and there's pavers with other surfaces. So, it does say pavers, but then it also has kind of a, you know, an, an open-ended or other similar materials.
And this is in the town center area or in residential areas?
This is in the town center area.
Okay, okay. I, I think I'm comfortable with that one then, Madam Chair, so I'll just skip to my second motion.
If I may, there is an additional requirement within the town center or within the neighborhood center and then within a quarter mile of the center itself. So, residential within, within a quarter mile.
Yeah, that, that's okay. I, I'm comfortable with that. So, I'm gonna move then, Madam Chair, if I may, to what would have been my third motion. It's actually gonna be my second motion. And this, this one pertains to the ELAP buffering and I, I feel compelled to give just a little bit of background on this one. The motion I'm about to make, it comes from a place of support, strong support for our ELAP program. And I just want to make sure that we don't make a public policy decision that, you know, makes it such that neighbors don't want an ELAP parcel next to them or that, that, you know, ELAP, you know, starts to be viewed as a situation that, you know, ELAP, you know, starts to be viewed as a situation where there's a taking, because that's not how ELAP is designed. It's not a regulatory model. It's a completely voluntary model. So coming from a place of support of ELAP, and, you know, seeing what I, or reading what I've read about the Sumner property in particular, the Sumner family has graciously supported our ELAP program in terms of selling property to the county for that. And when a landowner sells property to the county for the ELAP program, it's almost always at a discount versus what they would get from a private buyer. So, you know, I just, I look there, and they've been such gracious supporters of the program, and I just want to make sure that we're not punishing anyone that's been a supporter. So what I'd like to do in my motion, it is going to pertain to, if I may have just a It's going to pertain to Section F subsection. Hold on here. My, my computer has timed out on me here, but it's, I have it back up. It is going to be Section F subsection 1A4. And then this is also going to impact the subsequent table. I believe staff can, if my motion passes, can just adjust the table with a footnote. I believe it can be handled that way. But my motion is going to be to only require a 50-foot buffer against ELAP properties with no screening and with stormwater ponds allowed within that buffer area.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second. I have a question.
We have a second by Commissioner Myers. Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, since that's already on there.
Thank you. Is Mr. Forest Turberville on the call, and can he maybe address this and speak to the benefit of 250 versus 50? And any thoughts about that from the ELAP program perspective?
Sure. Commissioner, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Forest Turberville, Director of Conservation and Environmental Lands Management. The 250-foot buffer was originally meant to buffer adjacent neighborhoods or future neighborhoods from the effects of primarily prescribed fire. 50 feet, to me, is a little light. I'd prefer to see 100 feet at a minimum. I have talked with other staff in the county, planning commission staff, as well as Development Services. 100 feet is something we could live with. 100 feet could also accommodate stormwater ponds adequately. I don't know that 50 feet could. In fact, in the table there, I think just beyond Section F, you'll see that for a 250-foot buffer, as well as for 100-foot buffer, stormwater ponds are allowed, but not for a 50-foot buffer. And while I don't know the exact genesis of that, of that table, or what the engineering portion of it might be, I just can't imagine a stormwater pond going into a 50-foot buffer. It would have to be awfully small. So my recommendation would be to take it from 250 feet to no less than 100 feet, and also be able to incorporate both stormwater ponds and some kind of a community benefit feature into that area, such as a trail, or a community garden, or perhaps a community farm.
Thank you. And I'll just say that, let's all keep in mind that this is in the rural area where your density is one per five. It's outside the urban service area where your density is one per five. In order to, you know, you can develop all you want with however many buffer or no buffer you want at one per five. If you want to multiply that by 10 and get one per two acre, that's 10 per five, then you have to do certain things. And out in this rural area where, you know, ELAP is a concern, this is one of the things that you need to do. I would, let me ask one more question of staff. Does this buffer area count towards the, oh, wait, Baum doesn't require 40% green space or anything, do they? The RP2, does this-
That 40% is in the-
WBR2. Okay. All right. So I would be open to coming down, you know, 150, or, you know, twist my arm for, if Mr. Turberville's okay with 100, and maybe we can do something there.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I've been talking with Mr. Turberville a lot lately. And so I was surprised that there was an issue with a 250-feet buffer that still allowed, you know, shade trees, ornamental trees, 25 shrubs, and, you know, stormwater within it that could be technically used as a way of creating a buffer between a residential area and a ELAP property. And the reason I say that is, I have, while this doesn't apply to Baum, per se, because you are, this is a rural area. But we have other areas where we have very, very sensitive lands, very, very sensitive wetlands, very, very sensitive wildlife, that need that buffer for the safe space. So it's not like you can't do anything there, is my understanding, but you can't put a building there. You just, you can't put it in within the 250 feet. I'm not sure it matters to a gopher tortoise if it's 250 or 100, but it probably does to the person who ends up with one in their backyard, if it's only 100 feet. So I'm just curious as to, I understand the prescribed burn issue. I do recognize that. And I don't know what, how to do that, to suggest that 100 versus 250 is that much of an importance. And maybe Mr. Turberville, who does work with the team of people who do prescribe burns on ELAP land, could give us some advice on the difference in, in the character of the protection that is provided for ELAP lands.
Thank you, Commissioner. So one recommendation that we have discussed, myself, the Planning Commission, Development Services, is to have flexibility in terms of how the buffer can be designed, so to speak. So for example, if you're near extremely flammable fuels, habitats, such as sandhill scrub, perhaps you could go 200 to 250 feet away from there. That would be a prudent measure. In other areas along the shared property boundary, where there are wetlands and other, you know, areas that are not as flammable, you might be able to go down to 100 feet. But at the end of the day, when you're talking about the shared boundary and the total linear feet, it should be somewhere in that 100 to 150-foot buffer average in terms of width. 100 to 150 feet, it's kind of, at least internally, what we all agreed on would be a reasonable distance to protect both the preserve, which is a public asset, just like a building, just like a school, and at the same time, protect the adjacent neighborhood. When I say protect, I'm talking about from potential wildfires. We've seen what happened down in California from smoke, from prescribed burns. Basically, it gives us, as the ELAP program, as the managers of 66,000 acres throughout the county, defendable space to be able to conduct the management activities that we need to, to protect and enhance a public asset. And in this case, that 66,000 acres that we spent $350 million over 32 years to acquire. So my recommendation is to go no less than 100 feet on average, and if you could do 150 feet, that would probably be even better. But again, have staff work with each individual landowner or developer, walk the site, and in certain areas where the buffer needs to be greater than, say, 100 feet, it can be a little bit greater. And if it doesn't need to be 150 or 200 feet, we go down to 100 feet. But at some point, I think we need to state that there's going to be no less than an average width along the boundary, the shared boundary, of somewhere between 100 and 150 feet. And, you know, I'll just bring that out there for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Turberville. I really appreciate that answer. So mechanics-wise, how would, how would we, in the land code, as, for example, we, you know, 250 is recommended, 150 is a minimum, but if there's, if there's a way to actually describe it in such a way that if it provides a safe environment for the ELAP land, as well as the homeowner, it could be reduced to, I'll say, 150. But 250 is the recommended. Is it possible to go there in our language without having to have someone completely have to, you know, come back and ask for a waiver and all those kinds of things?
Yes, Commissioner, that, that is possible. So if one, the question is establishing a 200-
So currently, it's 250 feet.
Correct.
Is it possible that the language could indicate that if upon inspection or prior to approval, that if it appears as though 150 feet is, does not represent a significant risk to the home, you know, to the property owners adjacent to an ELAP land, as well as the ELAP property, that it could be, in fact, reduced on the average, as he's described? And I'm, like I said, I don't know, I don't know how to write that language, but I'd like to be able to recognize that there are places where, you know, there is more open land, there's an opportunity, it is a rural area, but there are going to be areas where 250 feet is appropriate. You need to, you need that 250 feet in order to protect the ELAP land. So how would we word that to meet the goal of accommodating those that would like to see less, because it seems appropriate for that particular piece of property?
So the setbacks will be established through the, through the, if there's some latitude in the setbacks from what the code provides, that will come to the board in the form of a planned development. So in that planned development zoning, there can be an assessment and review of whether 250 feet is needed, or whether there are mitigating factors that would reduce the risk to ELAP land and adjacent development to warrant a reduction in that buffer.
Okay. That's very helpful information. Thank you. Commissioner White, have you considered that information? Would you like to make an amendment to your motion, or shall?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw my motion and restate it. And see if I get a second, and I'd like for that to, to come to a vote. I've seen some language that's consistent with what you're describing, but I just, I want to put a motion on the floor that's just more simple and see if it gets voted up or down. So I'm going to withdraw my original motion, and in listening to board discussion, I'm going to move that the buffer adjacent to ELAP sites be at 100 feet with no screening required, with stormwater ponds, trails, and community farming activities allowed within the buffering zone.
Do we have, we have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Commissioner Hagan?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. So we have a second by Commissioner Hagan. And then, I don't know, do we have Commissioner Smith? You're recognized.
Thank you. And Commissioner White, I understand the concern. This occurred to me as well about the, in fact, as some of the people mentioned, you don't want to make it a detriment to have ELAP land next to you. I very much appreciate that. And ELAP is a voluntary program, and we need to be respectful of that. That's how it works. At the same time, I am concerned about the, I also appreciate where you're going with just wanting to get a simple 100 feet, and then we'll go from there. I understand that and respect it, but I would prefer to try for something that allows ELAP a little more review and latitude in the PD process. So I'm going to try a substitute motion that will say something like Commissioner Overman was getting at, that in lands adjacent to ELAP in this RP2 area, it shall have the 250-foot buffer, which, by the way, you already have the same thing at scenic roadways. So it's not, you know, out of the realm. So it'll be 250-foot buffer unless, upon review in the PD process with, that staff determines a smaller buffer is warranted, down to a minimum of 100 feet.
I'll second that.
Something like that. If, you know, if the attorneys decide there's a better way to say that, feel free, but that's the gist.
Okay, we have a substitute motion at this point by Commissioner Smith, with a second by Commissioner Overman. Do we have further discussion on this by anyone? Seeing no further discussion at this time, we'll have a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Okay. And with that, I don't know, do you have more motions?
Well, I'd like to just wrap it up, Madam Chair.
And I would just like to say that was a very good discussion, I think, and one, I think everybody is sensitive to the same things and wants to see that happen. So I appreciate the form of the motion in the first place and the discussion about it, just-
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, just to wrap it up in closing, and this will be very brief, Madam Chair, you know, I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Niemann and the other gentlemen. I wish we didn't have RP2, but we were dealt this card back in the '90s, before any of us were here, and, you know, we would have all kinds of legal problems if we just simply repealed it. I do have a question of staff, and I meant to ask this earlier on. When it comes to the community farming concept, and I think my legislative aide asked this question and was given an answer, but I just want to make sure that I understood her correctly, and just to get it on the record, for the community farming amenities, ranching-type activities and equestrian activities would be in allowable use in that scenario, correct?
Commissioner, this is Jay Collins with the Planning Commission. I believe stables were actually removed from it because of animal production units were not allowed. So some of the larger animals would be removed. However, we do follow the normal county code- However, we do follow the normal county code for the amount of acreage that's set aside to the amount of animals one might have on the farm. So it follows that part of the code. I'm sure Mr. Gormly might be able to speak more to how that mathematically works, but the idea of a stable, I believe, is something that has been removed from discussion.
And tell me again why stables were removed?
I believe it was seen as something that would be considered a bit more intensive than what the community farm was thought of.
Well, we may not want to get into that one tonight, but, you know, we have a chance to go back to the community and talk to the community further, but I certainly think that community stables would be a wonderful amenity if there's a developer and a community that wants them. And that would certainly keep with the rural character of BOM. We've all seen the Keep BOM Rural cap. So, you know, I tell you what, I see a lot of heads nodding, and just because it's in there doesn't mean that it's gonna happen. I mean, it's, you know, it's up to the free markets, and it's up to what developers want to do and what the community says they want at the time of a rezoning or what have you. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we would allow stables to be a part of a community farming amenity.
And that was Commissioner Overman?
Yes.
And if I could jump in at this time, this is something when it was conveyed to my office with regards to prohibited uses, and I found it so that they, I honestly, the prohibited uses is so extreme here that it seems to me like it's like a community garden or something, not a community farm. I really thought of true working farms, not that we would eliminate those in areas where they were operating, and I would like to see them. In fact, I would like to see that be part of, I mean, when I heard agrichubs, I wasn't just thinking about community gardens where they can do them anywhere. I mean, I was thinking about a real, live, working, community-owned farm. So this says prohibited uses, and I find it extreme, and I find it makes a farm not possible. Animal production units, which I understand packing houses, I can see where you wouldn't want those. Then it says plant farms and greenhouses, this is a prohibited use, a greenhouse, which seedlings and things and all, I mean, and some of it is all greenhouses, some of the restaurants and things are just doing strictly greenhouse production, like in northern climes where they can't do year-round. It also prohibits poultry and egg farms, which many farms have poultry and egg, dairy, which I could think of, perhaps you would have goat sometimes, goat cheese, those kinds of things are very popular. Public and private stables, which you referred to, farmworker housing, and labor camps. And that, one thing that can, we obviously wouldn't want labor camps, but I know on Sweetwater Farm, they've always had a few people in residence, and even students and interns in residence there, and kind of a farm, they have a farmhouse on the property of people that run the farm, just like any farm usually has. Some owner, I mean, I know that they turn into commercial productions now, but if we were doing a truly community farm, I would think you would have onsite maybe a family or two or some kind of caretakers. Prohibits agricultural manufacturing, and I just, all I worried about is, does that include jellies or jams or, I'm not sure. Agricultural activity, it prohibits agricultural activity with significant structural coverage or off-site impact. So I'm not, that definition, which...
Is it clear?
Yeah, and it also seems extreme, like it would prohibit like almost anything but like a community garden of some sort. And so, anyway, I think this definition is very concerning to me in general, and I'm just, I just wanted to share that.
Well, Madam Chair, in hearing that, I'm gonna withdraw my original motion and put a new motion on the floor. And that would be to strike from the prohibited uses that you just read off, everything except labor camps, packing houses, and agricultural manufacturing. That's my motion.
Second. That's a second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
That's for after this.
Oh, okay. So do we have anyone who wants to speak to this motion at this time, to Commissioner?
I'd like to just ask staff to reach out to IFIS and to our, the person who's actually working on our urban and rural community agricultural project to see if there would be any problem with, you know, addressing something that we may have just stricken. But I think for the point of the motion and the desire to make sure that rural communities that are, that survive and thrive and celebrate agriculture, I think this is a reasonable compromise.
Okay. So hearing no one else that wants to speak to this motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and hearing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And Madam Chair, I promise I'm gonna bring my comments in for a landing this time. No, no, no.
That's okay. I think we need to take all the time we can. These are big, important issues, and the community's been involved. We've had a year of bringing this down, so.
Well, my final comment, Madam Chair, is I'm gonna support adoption of this tonight, but I do believe we still have a little bit more work to do, and it's okay to go ahead and get this adopted and in place, but to go back out into the community. So I'm gonna make a specific, a very specific request of staff. It is my understanding that the Sumner property and the McCullough property may be the only two pieces left to develop in the area, certainly the only two significant pieces that are remaining. I happen to know that the ELAP program would very much like to acquire the Sumner property because it would connect a key corridor. I happen to know, because I enjoy scenic beauty and because I drive through there all the time, that there is just a beautiful piece of scrub habitat in the corner on the McCullough property. And I think it would make a great park amenity for the community. I know that the BOM community right now isn't wild and crazy about TDRs within the community area. I would hope I could get them to perhaps warm up to that idea because there could be an opportunity to trade some density entitlements perhaps between the Sumner and McCullough property. And I know there are visions that the McCullough property could eventually be a commercial or a town center area. But, you know, the only way to get that done, I mean, look, I believe wholeheartedly in private property rights, you know, the only way to get that done is to get everyone to the table, to have a conversation, and see if they could hammer out something that they could bring to this board for consideration. So my very specific request is to ask staff, and I would envision that being Development Services staff, perhaps Planning Commission staff, and also ELAP and Parks and Rec staff, to get together with the Sumners and McCulloughs and their representative, and perhaps some select members of community interests to sit down and talk about those two significant parcels and, you know, see if they can come up with something creative. Sometimes you just have to, sometimes it's all about creativity in this process, and then it would be up to staff to synthesize that into something that's legally sound and it's good public policy that they can bring to this board for consideration. So my final request is just that, that staff that I've mentioned get together with those two families, their representative, perhaps one or two point people that would represent community interests, and just talk, and just see if there's something that can be developed to bring back to the board. But for now, I am in support of adopting this plan so that we have most of the work done.
Second.
So is the motion, so should we take this motion separately in terms of seeing the families and then...
Madam Chair, I didn't intend for that to be a motion. I'll leave it up to you as the chair as to whether or not you want to look for board consensus on that or if you want it to be a formal motion.
I think it would be valuable because I think it's a great suggestion, so I'd suggest, and there might be, I have one other thing that, you know, I'd like to raise too, and there might, you know, Commissioner Smith has been waiting to, so let's just look right now, we'll take you as the motion to do this, to pass this, with Commissioner Myers as a second, but right now, let's take a vote just on looking to acquire that as ELAP property. I just think it would be...
Well, I think, yeah, I think my motion would be to just have a talk with the parties at this point.
And I did mean to put it forward, but...
Yep, just to talk about various ideas.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Could you restate it so it's very clear for the record, for me?
Yeah, and of course, there are some private parties that are gonna have to agree with this.
Of course.
So maybe I can state the motion as such. So the motion would be for staff, which would include Development Services staff, Planning Commission staff, ELAP staff, Parks and Rec staff, to engage the Sumner-McCullough family and their representatives, and perhaps a point person that would represent community interests to just have a conversation about further land use policy in the RP2 area.
That's a good way of putting it. Okay. And, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Just to the motion, I heard you saying, you know, preservation is one way to go, transfer of development rights is another way to go, who knows what other creative options there might be thinking outside the box. So it's clear we're not, like, directing an ELAP purchase or anything specifically.
Mm-hmm. Great. And is there any further discussion to the motion at this time?
I think Mr. Gormly wants to...
Yes, Mr. Gormly.
It's a different motion. I just wanted to make a clarification on the, on the community farms that prohibited, previously prohibited uses that were deleted. Well, we're intending to include those as specifically included uses just to make sure there's no, just to make sure it's clear.
Okay. Mm-hmm. And so with that, to this motion, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers. This is just to, the generalized motion of suggestions about the land possibilities. And with that, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And with that, before we go to the general, Commissioner Smith, I know you're recognized.
I'm done.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, and quickly, I want to, and I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody, thanking the citizens and the staff and the planners and the attorneys who have put in so much work on this, on this project through really difficult times with the challenges of COVID and virtual meetings and, you know, always these, I've been engaged in several community plans, and they're, they're always controversial with a lot of interest involved, and like any community plan, no one got everything they wanted. I know I didn't, and I agree with Commissioner White and Mr. Niemann that these RP2 and WVR2 designations were ill-conceived, in my view, to begin with. But it was done many, many years ago, and it's simply not possible to remove them entirely. I do think that we are improving them more than I ever thought we could at the start of this process, and we're heading to a result that is much better than what we had. To the people who are asking for a delay, and there's people on all sides asking for a delay, we are facing a serious deadline with the end of this moratorium. And I don't know if people realize what a gift it has been to be able to look at these comp plan amendments, land development code amendments with the benefit of a moratorium. I wish we had had that when we did my community plan because we had, and I'll tell you, if the moratorium's gonna end at the end of the year, we have extended it and extended it. We cannot, well, I'll just say, it's not, it's not clear. I'm not sure that we'd be able to legally defend another extension, let me put it that way. It would be very difficult. We can always continue amending the comprehensive plan, but the revisions we make today will take some time for staff to work out, then the state takes time to review and accept the changes, then there's a 31-day waiting period. And in my case, Ruskin Community Plan, during that 31-day waiting period, after we'd already transmitted and adopted and approved and kumbaya, we still had development coming in that was contrary to our community plan, and nothing we can do about it because we didn't have a moratorium. So we need to get this all done during the moratorium period with all those, all those different periods after tonight, or you will end up with development that doesn't have to comply with what we've all worked so hard on during this time. So I just wanted to make that clear to the speakers. I do have one more change that I'd like to suggest, given that the community is still feeling, and I agree wholeheartedly, that they still are wishing for larger lots, and there's a concern over the smallest of the lot sizes, especially the 5,000-square-foot lots. And let me say, 5,000-square-foot lots, you know, you have a table of lot sizes in the Land Development Code, page 17 of your backup. And the 5,000-square-foot is the smallest, then 6,000, then 10,000, then 21,000, okay? So, but the 5,000-square-foot lots, 50-foot wide, those end up with five feet setbacks on the side. Those are, those are very urban development pattern. They are not allowed in the Ruskin Community Plan inside the urban area, in an area where the comp plan says four per acre, you cannot do that small a lot in, inside the urban service area where the comp plan says four per acre. Here, we're talking about giving somebody two per acre outside the urban service area? I mean, 5,000-square-foot lots are not compatible with the BOM community. In Ruskin, you can only have at most, in the area I'm talking about where it's four per acre, in the urban area, urban service area, you can only have at most 30% 6,000-square-foot We have a rural area in Ruskin, and there we require the lots to be much, much larger. I think it's half acre. Standard lot sizes in a four-per-acre standard configuration are 10,000-square-foot wide in our Euclidean zoning standard lot size. 10,000 square feet, 75-foot wide in an urban area, four per acre, 10,000 square foot. So this is half that, 5,000 square feet in, outside of BOM. Stan, our Land Development Code for two per acre says the lot sizes should be 21,780 square feet. Now, that's lot size two here, but that's a standard lot size for two per acre. So allowing, you know, for a variety of lot sizes and all, in an area that is one for five, but you're letting them go to two per acre, I think you've got plenty to work with at 6,000 to 9,000, 10,000, 6,000, 10,000, 21,000 square feet. And I would make a motion to eliminate the 5,000... feet. And I would make a motion to eliminate the 5,000-square-foot lots. I think it's, it's just inappropriate. Those are the ones that we're going to have, the rear-loaded thing we've eliminated already. So my motion is to eliminate 5,000-square-feet lots in this area.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. That was a virtual second by Commissioner Cohen, fast. And with that, do we have any further discussion? I just, Commissioner Smith, I didn't, I know that the residents of Baum have asked for this repeatedly, over and over again. I did not, until I heard your comparison, understand exactly when you did that scaling, you know, how common or unusual this was to have that, that size. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I just have a question. When you have it that small, are we talking about town homes in, in the, in the, maybe an urban center within? I mean, like a, a smaller community or a business center for Baum? But that doesn't sound like what we're talking about. That's, that's why I wanted to get clarification.
Right. No, you're talking about RSC nine.
RSC nine.
Nine per acre. Not two per acre, nine per acre.
Nine per acre, okay.
And Baum doesn't have the town center like Wy Mama. That is not part of what they have asked for and explicitly said that they didn't want.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to get clarity, because I know we've talked about it in the Wy Mom, in the WRV2. So basically, it's the type five, single-family residential, rear-loaded for 5,000 to 5,900 that we're striking out of, out of the option. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion at this time, can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
No, I'm good.
You're, that's everything. Okay, I have one other thing that I, I've been asked about this, and I'd like to see if somebody wanted to make a motion to add this in. It's pretty simple. We did this with Wy Mama, and the Baum community has been clear that they liked this provision that we did with Wy Mama. It's pretty simple. It's not actually added into the comprehensive plan, and this is the language I got when we did this for Wy Mama. And that's the fact that they would like kind of a review committee to be feeding back, their civic association to be reviewing as these come forward and feeding back to the board in a little more formal and recognized way when these proposals are made. And so the language that, that was provided to me at the planning commission, by the planning commission, by Ms. Zornita at the time, was, and I'll change this to Baum, "The Baum community shall be involved in an ongoing basis with the county and other community partners as the community plan is implemented." And this would be added to the end of the introduction paragraph of the livable community element. And so is there anyone that would like to move to memorialize that in a more formal way?
Sure.
I'll second it if you want to.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, and seconded by Commissioner Overman?
Yeah.
I just-
I have a question.
Rather than taking the gavel.
Yeah, it's fine. It's fine.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Okay. And, and so the question I have is, is there, they just are a collaborative group that provides an opportunity for the dialogue, but there, it doesn't come with the authority to rescind anything.
No, this is, always just comes to the board. But this is a informal, and this isn't the final statement, but kind of a, just a memorializing of their desire to have something, and we don't have anything formal set up. But it has no powers or, I mean, no power of the board to. Did, Ms. Lundgren, did you?
There, there is an issue, unfortunately, with adding any language to the livable community element. If there is a way to add that language elsewhere in the, in the comprehensive plan element that is being amended-
Oh, because we did it in the first one. Okay, so where would you add it?
I might direct that question to Ms. Zornita as to where she thinks it might make sense within the RP2 plan amendment that has been advertised for amendment, which is the future land use element.
Ms. Zornita?
Yes, ma'am. I think we could add it to the second paragraph of the introduction on planned villages in the future land use element. It talks about aligning this specifically with the intent of the Baum community plan, and that might be a logical place to insert the language about their continued involvement.
Great. Thank you. And so with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Do we have any more discussion with regards to this? And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. And at this time, can we move to the main motion? There's no further discussion on any other part of this. And moving to the main motion, we already have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers to approve. Is this both for the comprehensive plan amendment and also we'll go for a second motion and vote for the land development code? So we'll start with the, the motion to vote to approve the ordinance for adoption of the comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 20-11. And do we, no, seeing no further discussion? Okay. At this time, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
And the second would be a motion and vote to approve the ordinance adopting the land development code amendment, LDC 21-0288. And that would be by Commissioner White, a motion, did, oh, okay, and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Okay. And seeing no further discussion at this time, can we please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Okay, thank you. And the ordinance for adoption, this is what was referred to before, of the LDC 21-0288 shall become effective upon the effective date of the CPA 20-11, which is, it's a process that we're going to be going through. So it will not be, it's not effective tonight. It will, we'll, we'll have to let, you know, as we get back the required process through it. Okay. And with that, I'm going to move to Ms. (laugh) This has been a long process. And we, and-
It's been like two years.
As Commissioner Smith says, thank you all. I mean, I, I know that you personally experienced it in such a, in such a way. And I know I did, but not quite the same way as an aide for Commissioner Castor. So it's, it was a very, this was a very big process. And, and as you have both stated, yeah, we can't reverse the lawsuit that was done in the 90s and the settlement that was done then. And, you know, we're, we're in the posture we're in. But I do think it's, I think we've moved forward in, in a very good way tonight. And in the last, it's been, it's been painful for everyone. That's for sure. And with that, Ms. Zornita, we will move now to the livable communities element and Wy Mama.
Yes, Commissioners. Now we'll move to the amendments to the livable communities elements, future land use elements and land development code related to the Wy Mama Community Plan and Wy Mama Village 2. And I'll turn it over to Sophia Garantiva from our staff for her presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
We can't hear you.
A moment, can you hear me now?
A little bit louder would be preferable.
How about now?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sophia Garantiva with the Planning Commission, and I'll be presenting the comprehensive plan and land development code amendments as part of the Wy Mama Community Plan update for tonight's adoption. Similar to the RP2 presentation, this evening's presentation will only be reviewing-
It's still very, very low volume.
Oh, let's see if I can get a little bit closer. Is that better?
That's way better.
All right, perfect. I was just saying, similar to RP2, this evening's presentation will only be reviewing the updates since the August 12th transmittal hearing. There are two comprehensive plan text amendments being reviewed. It's HC CPA 20-12 for the Wy Mama Community Plan update in the livable communities element, and HC CPA 20-13 for the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, future land use. Also, the land development code amendment, LDC 21-0289 for the Wy Mama Village Residential Neighborhood, WVR2, and the Wy Mama Downtown Overlay. As a refresher, the study area is within the Wy Mama Community Plan boundary, which is shown in red. The blue shading depicts the area designated as WVR2. The light gray shading depicts the urban service area. And as a reminder, neither the boundaries of the community plan or the WVR2 are being modified as part of these amendments. Before going through the updates, we'd like to briefly review the community engagement efforts since the beginning of the study from March 2020 to August 21.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is she supposed to have a presentation up?
Are, are, are you supposed-
I apologize. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like it's happening. Okay, there we go.
My, my apologies. Can't tell it's my first time, can you? All right. Would you like me to begin from, start from the beginning?
Yes, I think that'd be valuable.
All right, perfect. Well, good evening again. My name is Sophia Garantiva with the Planning Commission, and I'll be presenting the comprehensive plan and land development code amendments as part of the Wy Mama Plan update for tonight's adoption hearing. The presentation outlined, similar to RP2, is presentation, this evening's presentation will only be reviewing the updates since the August 12th transmittal hearing. There are two comprehensive plan text amendments being reviewed, HC CPA 20-12 for the Wy Mama Community Plan update in the livable communities element, and HC CPA 20-13 for the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, future land use. Also, the land development code, LDC 21-0289 for the Wy Mama Village Residential Neighborhood, WVR2, and the Wy Mama Downtown Overlay. As a refresher, the study area is shown here, within the community, within the Wy Mama Community Plan boundary, which is shown in red. The blue shading depicts the area designated as WVR2. The light gray shading depicts the urban service area. And as a reminder, neither of the boundaries of the community plan or the WVR2 are being modified as part of these amendments. Now, before going through the updates, we'd like to briefly review the community engagement effort since the beginning of the study. From March 2020 to August 2021, about 17 months, multiple presentations were made to elected and appointed officials, and various types of meetings were held with the community in person, virtually, and in hybrid format. Mail notices were sent to hundreds of property owners within the study area, and signs were posted throughout the community. In August, the Board voted to transmit the amendments to the State Department of Economic Opportunity for review. Continuing the timeline for the study, for the study, since August, Planning Commission staff has continued meeting with community partners virtually at their request and coordinating with county staff on updating the proposed LDC amendments. On September 18th, a hybrid informational community meeting was held at the Wy Mama Civic Center to review changes made by the Board at the August 12th transmittal hearing and answer any questions from the attendees. Although the Board did not direct staff to hold this meeting, staff felt that it would be beneficial to the community. The timeline brings us to today, the adoption hearing for the proposed amendments, and then on December 31st, 2021, the moratorium will end. At the August 12th transmittal hearing at the Board, the Board had made comments or made motions regarding specific topics in the proposed amendments. Staff and the consultant worked to address the update and proposed language, update the proposed language. The highlights include clarifying specifics on uses within the neighborhood centers, updating the community benefits table to require an additional community meeting, and updating language requiring six building lot types instead of the previously proposed four-building lot types within developments in WVR2. These updates and others will be described in more detail in the following slides. We'll now review the details, review the updates made since the transmittal hearing to HC CPA 20-12, the livable communities element. Updates to the LCE include language modified in the introduction to clarify context, language added to the Wy Mama Downtown goals and strategies from the proposed Wy Mama Overlay, including regulatory language for Wy Mama Downtown East, and graphics were added to the non-adopted community plan from the proposed WVR2 LDC. The language added to the Wy Mama Downtown golden strategies from the proposed downtown overlay included expanding the descriptive text for the downtown overlay districts shown on the left. The most significant expansion was to the Wy Mama Downtown East District where language was added to regulate industrial uses. And as shown on the right, in addition to the lot types within the overlay, industrial uses, uses shall be regulated by the manufacturing M or agricultural industrial AI zoning districts depending on use. We continue with the updates made to HC CPA 20-13, the future land use element, specifically the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, future land use. In Policy 48.3, the residential clustering ratio was removed. Clustering is still encouraged and can be accomplished through other policies. In Policy 48.7, for the community benefit options, the requirement of a second community meeting was added. The meeting shall occur after an application is submitted prior to the letter of mailing notice deadline. There are now a total of two community meetings required. Similar to RP2, also was added the consideration of a benefit being used more than once if the benefit meets a requirement twice or by 100% or more. And generally, language was modified to clarify the intent of various community benefit options. Continue with the updates made to LDC amendment 21-0289, Wy Mama Downtown Overlay and the Wy Mama Village Residential Neighborhood. The Wy Mama Downtown Overlay, as a refresher, is shown on the map on the right and was a goal established in the original Wy Mama Community Plan and sets design standards to implement the vision, principles, and strategies of the community plan. Updates to the overlay include general updates to spelling, grammar, punctuation, as well as reorganization and clarification of certain code sections. Applicability language for single-family and two-family dwellings were updated in response to changes in state law, specifically House Bill 401. For the updated language, single-family and two-family dwellings may develop utilizing the applicable Wy Mama Downtown Overlay standards or a standard zoning district. If developed, utilizing the applicable overlay standards, a planned development rezoning will be required. As previously stated, language for downtown districts was modified and moved to the LCE, and a section was added to address substandard roads. The Wy Mama Village Residential Neighborhood or WVR2 LDC language is applicable to the area shaded in blue, as shown on the map to the right. WVR2 and downtown Wy Mama Overlay share design standards so that there is continuity between neighborhoods and Wy Mama. Similar to the downtown overlay, the WVR2 LDC updates include general updates to spelling, grammar, punctuation, as well as reorganization and clarification of the code sections. Also, all definitions have been moved to Article 12 of the LDC, and new uses have been added to Section 611. These include defining neighborhood centers and the uses allowed within the neighborhood centers, but is not limited to that. Language for block parameters were also updated, and also, like in the overlay, section was added to address substandard roads. Also proposed, also the proposed WVR2 language was updated to reflect the requirement of six different building lot types and provide relief for those developments less than 100 acres. Lot type graphics and street prosections were removed and placed in the non-adopted community plan, and the community benefits list was updated to be consistent with the future land use element. And to review, there are two comprehensive plan text amendments, HC CPA 20-12 for the Wy Mama Community Plan update in the livable communities element, and HC CPA 20-13 for the Wy Mama Village Residential 2. and HCCPA 20-13 for the Wyomama Village Residential 2 Future Land Use. There is also the Land Development Code Amendment, LDC 21-0289 for the Wyomama Village Residential Neighborhood, WVR2, and the Wyomama Downtown Overlay. To restate the findings from the transmittal hearing, Planning Commission found the amendments consistent and recommended it to the Board of County Commissioners. Additionally, the Department of Economic Opportunity had no objections to HCCPA 20-12 or HCCPA 20-13. This concludes my presentation. Planning Commission staff and the consultant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to our public hearing. And let me go, and we'll, I guess, do we have, I guess we'll do the same. If we can make the same. What we did in the earlier public hearing was to combine both the comprehensive plan amendment, as well as the land development code, and gave each speaker four minutes instead of three to address both of them, so maybe we could-
I'll make that motion to for four minutes for each speaker to address all three items before us to comp plan amendments and the land development code change.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Overman, seeing no further discussion. Can we do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm going to try to catch. I think people, it's a little confusing because some people that I skipped over on the first section are signed up for the second section and all four different ones, so bear with me a little, and we'll try and make sure everybody who signed up gets to speak. We'll start out with Pamela Gomez.
Is Pamela Gomez on the line?
Pamela Gomez is on her way in.
Oh, she's over at the library.
And maybe so people are aware of the next speakers, just Pamela Gomez, Tonia Jackson, and Gil Martinez are the next three speakers.
And Madam Chair, Tonia Jackson did not pull in.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Is this- Good evening, everyone. I'm Commissioner. Thank you, Chairwoman, I'm Kemp, I'm Commissioner for this opportunity. We're gathered at the library, so you'll see first come up. So I'm Pamela Gomez, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation. The Wyomama CDC has meaningful change aligned with the needs of the Wyomama community, and our work focuses on three strategic priorities: educational, economic, and housing opportunities. We are excited that in nearly two years after we advocated for the update of the Wyomama Village 2007 Neighborhood Plan, we're in the final stages of adopting a new plan. We are thankful to all that have been contributed, valuable input, which has shaped the path guiding towards the goals of health, equity, resilience, and sustainability, and to move its goal of well-being, housing, and opportunities for Wyomama. As a result of your leadership and our collective efforts, Wyomama will have a plan for redevelopment that is consistent with key community values, goals, that will provide equitable opportunities and community benefits for its residents. We thank everyone that has been committed to these efforts to bring about equitable development for the Wyomama community and address marked growth. We understand that the Wyomama Community Plan's adoption is a critical step towards transforming Wyomama into a community where all thrive. As we move forward in the implementation of the plan, we do have a fear and concern that without its strategy to implement the goals of the Wyomama Village Plan, the work that has been done by our community organizations, namely Enterprise Latinas, the Wyomama CDC, and by you and our public agencies to update the neighborhood plan, will have limited impact. We've come to you with a coordinated implementation strategy that calls for significant and sustained efforts over many years to realize the benefits of new development rules and mandates, which includes four primary strategies to ensure that the Wyomama becomes a place of opportunity for all by doing one of four things. Create equity opportunities through development that realize established community benefits, and the establishment of a Wyomama Community Task Force. Increase community awareness of Wyomama Village Residential Plan 2, its goals, its strategies, and activities. Safeguard the lived environment and advance resiliency opportunities, and importantly, encourage and expand new economic opportunities. While the establishment of the new rules for the development in Wyomama, community benefits defined under the new WVR2 plan provide a good start to turn the tide of decades-long of disinvestment. We acknowledge that the work will require multiple reinforcing strategies, stakeholder investments, and resources. It is our hope and the expectation that the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners will continue to support this work and is committed to establish mandates for the equitable redevelopment of Wyomama. Thus, we ask that you support the Wyomama CDC as we continue to lead center social and economic equity and meaningful community impact moving forward. We thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. And for the record, we have now opened the public hearing on the amendment to the future land use element and community plan update, as well as related amendments to the land development code. Our first speaker, Pamela Gomez. We will now hear Gil Martinez.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gil Martinez. I am the Community Development Planner for Enterprise Latinas. I'm also a resident in the South Shore area. Commissioners, it's been over two and a half year process to arrive at this juncture. Your decision today will set the standard and direction of growth in Wyomama and the economic prosperity of Wyomama's community. The plan as presented to you has received the unanimous approval of the Planning Commission and the unanimous vote by this body in August of this year. We urge you to approve this plan with the presented community benefits lists. We also request that you take a bold step in investing into the plan's implementation to channel funding and resources to Wyomama. Your investment will afford community organizations in Wyomama the ability to further their community development strategies that are in the plan, as creating equitable opportunities through development that realizes and establishes community benefits, increase the community awareness of the WVR2 plan, goals, strategies, and activities, and encourage and expand new economic opportunities for residents and small businesses. We are counting on you to make a commitment to ensure Wyomama is a special place in Hillsborough County, a unique community with its own sense of identity, its essential and historic and cultural attributes, and an example of smart community planning and community involvement. Thank you very much. We count on your support.
Thank you. Liz Gutierrez?
Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Liz Gutierrez. I'm the founder and CEO of Enterprise Latinas. I'm here with many respected supporters of the Wyomama Village Neighborhood Plan at the South Shore Library. We're having a little bit of a watch party amongst the both of our organizations, Enterprise Latinas and the Wyomama CDC, and we're really excited that we've come to this moment of finally adopting neighborhood plan that while others have said in the past imperfect, it is nevertheless an important footprint for us to push forward a vision for the redevelopment of the area in a way that supports economic opportunity for existing as well as new residents. As everyone has mentioned in the past, this has been a challenging process for everyone. We want to take a moment to thank all the staff at the Planning Commission for their patience, to you, and even also to your aides who have made themselves available to the community every step of the process. This has been a very collective effort, and we appreciate everyone. We also want to thank all of the residents of Wyomama who have not given up on their community, who have not given up on this two-year road, and that continue to hang together because we believe in the future. This has been a challenging process because, as you know, the question of growth is a big challenge. There are some among us that believe that we should grow, however, we need to and build as much as we want to because there may be a demand for it. But we know from the reports that have been created through this process and conducted by consultants like the WTL, WTL Plus A, who concluded in their report to you as well as to staff of the commission, of the Planning Commission earlier this year, that in fact, based on real data, real research, that no additional development should take place, except maybe for the 3,000 units that have already been approved and not built yet. We should not add more development because there is no infrastructure in place to support it. Furthermore, their findings indicated that even the current units approved for planned developments in the WVR2 exceed the number of market-supportable units in the 10-year forecast. These are not my words, these are the direct words from the report that you all commissioned to have been done in this planning process. So we understand the challenge for building, and we understand the challenges of the existing community. And so, again, here's another direct quote from that report that says that the amount of developable land is more than sufficient to accommodate future growth in both the WVR2 as well as the RP2. So we know that being challenged to allow more growth, higher density, because the need is there, is not necessarily supported by the studies and the research that have been done for you and for all of us through this process. We know that the job requirements was also a challenge that's been in front of us, and we've tried to come up with a way to resolve it.
Ms. Gutierrez, your time is up. Ms. Gutierrez? Your time is up, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Georgina Romero?
Yes?
Go ahead with the comment, Georgina.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Georgina Romero, and I work for Enterprise Latinas in Wyomama as a family support manager. In my role, I interact with people who live and work in Wyomama. I am often in a position where community members ask me about lack of transportation, accessible to school, and accessible safe housing, street lighting, sidewalks, water, sewer, which they have water wells, and water quality is not safe for consumption, park and park programming, lacking of libraries. These questions are a reflection of the needs of our community. I know that there is no single approach to addressing these matters. On the contrary, it requires a holistic, comprehensive approach to community planning and community invest. Approval of the updated Wyomama Neighborhood Plan as well as funding its implementation will be the beginning in transforming Wyomama into a community where basic services are ensured and not an afterthought of increased residential development. Please approve the plan and invest in Wyomama. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Christina Bosworth?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments. My name is Christina Bosworth, and I am a resident of Wyomama, on the Board of Directors of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation, and an active member of the Wyomama Now Campaign, a group that was instrumental in getting community involvement in revising this plan. I have been involved in the workshops since the first round were held in early 2020, and as a result, I believe I have an excellent understanding of the plan. I would like to first thank the Commissioners for your support of the community's update of the Wyomama Village Plan and associated land use rules, including imposing a moratorium on new rezoning requests in WVR2 while we completed this process. Your continued support allowed us to complete this even during a global pandemic. It is truly appreciated. Planning Commission staff did an outstanding job getting community involvement. They never gave up on their outreach efforts, even as the pandemic raged. I applaud their efforts, and the results are that we had considerable community input into the plan. While everyone will not agree with every aspect of the final product, I believe it is a good plan and should be acceptable to everyone. I support the revised Wyomama Village Plan, including the associated land use rule. That said, I have lived in Wyomama for almost 10 years and have not seen any of the 2007 Neighborhood Plan elements enacted. Because of that history, we need to ensure that the revised Village Plan will be implemented. I am asking that you support the Wyomama CDC in any and every way possible, so that we have the capacity and means to lead a coordinated implementation strategy of the Wyomama Community Plan over time. Your investment in the Wyomama community and the Wyomama CDC will ensure we have a healthy and prosperous Wyomama. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Gonzalez?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Gonzalez. I work for Enterprise Latinas, but I am also a native of Wyomama. I grew up here in Wyomama, and I can tell you firsthand, there is a lack of infrastructure, and I grew up dealing with these kinds of problems. For example, the nearest park to where I grew up was about a mile, a mile and a half, and there was no direct sidewalk to be able to get to that park, and I would have to walk through the streets, risking my life with the coming cars and the lack of transportation in that area. If I would, if I had an adoptive appointment in Riverview or in Tampa, it would be, I would always find it hard, and my parents would always find it hard, to find a bus route that would take us on time. And if there wasn't a bus route that went directly to whatever place we were going to, we had to pay a neighbor or someone down the street to take us there, which obviously is not the best situation. Among this, there's other problems like street lighting, the water and sewer, as it was mentioned earlier. And I know that most of these problems can be fixed overnight, but I know the approval of the updated Wyomama Neighborhood Plan would be a great start. And your investment in this plan would be crucial to the future of Wyomama, as well as the future generation growing up currently right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Balden?
Bryce Balden called in, but has not.
Holly Jamison?
Holly Jamison, same thing. She had called in, but has hung up.
Joe Sumner?
Joe Sumner also has disconnected.
George Nieman?
George, are you there? Can you hear us?
No, I'm going to waive my comments tonight.
Could you repeat that, George? Your public comment is up.
I am going to waive my public comment.
You're waiving your public comment? Okay.
Yes.
And Alfred Bruner?
Alfred Bruner has disconnected.
And Noel Lacor?
Noel Lacor also has now disconnected.
Okay. I've done my best to go through multiple lists and compare the names, and I hope that I got everyone, but is there anyone there that I have not recognized at this time that we know of?
I believe if you're also including 83A, I believe, I'm not sure, did we get Christina Bosworth?
I did. We already heard from her earlier.
Yes, I believe that's all of them.
Okay, okay, great. With that, then, we'll close the public hearing, and we can move to board discussion at this time. Let's see, I think it's been fixed, but I'm still not getting any names up. Has it been? Okay, well, Commissioner Smith, did you want to?
Yes, there, I got it working.
Oh, there we go.
And, you know, again, I want to thank this community that has really, really worked really hard, and I'm so happy to hear this community's support tonight. I really admire these hardworking citizens, not only for their work, but for their understanding at the end of this very long process, that this is not the end, and their willingness to continue working to ensure that their community, Wyomama, develops in accordance with their vision for their community and a prosperous future for all residents and future generations. I hear the concern about development happening, outstripping infrastructure. I really am pleased that towards the end of this process, we were able to work with the attorneys, our attorneys, with our staff and the community to hammer out some policies regarding timeliness that I believe we really will be able to use to ensure that development does not get ahead of infrastructure and that the infrastructure happens at the same time as in the natural pace of development. And I also admire the citizens for their gratitude of our hardworking staff because this has been a very long process in a trying time, and our staff has worked hard at times to go back to the drawing board, and then back to the drawing board, and then back to the drawing board until we get this as right as it could be. And finally, you know, I admire the citizens for recognizing everybody doesn't get what they want in a process like this, but this is the time to appreciate what we have been able to do together. And I think it's, I'm really happy, I think it's a lot more, it's a lot better than what we had, and it's better than I really honestly thought that we could get. There is really just one tweak I'd like to suggest, and that is because these changes were made since our transmittal. There's been some changes, and I've gone through them all with staff, but one, I think, needs a little more tweaking, and that is in the livable communities element. Well, it's actually in a couple of elements, but there were some changes to add language about the downtown east area in Wyomama. In Wyomama, you've got the downtown area along 674, and you've got a specific area kind of at the eastern end of it, but then, and that's inside the urban service area. And that's where, you know, we want the real town center and the walkable, bikeable, denser development and mixed use. But then, east of that, outside the urban service area, there is this downtown east area. Now, that was recognized in the original community plan. So there's this area for kind of light industrial out there, but I was concerned when I was seeing so many restrictions being tossed to the wayside. Commercial locational criteria shall be waived, multi-use development is encouraged, but single-use, non-residential development may be considered, and community benefits are not required for the non-residential. So my questions with staff were, okay, anything goes outside the urban service area, what's the worst that could happen? I mean, clearly, we want jobs. We want local jobs, and this has been in the plan as a place for some industrial. But what if it were to have a lot of land taken up in some kinds of uses with very few jobs? I'm thinking of the Home Depot warehouse distribution center at 41 and Dale Mayberry that has 14 little warehouse jobs. And boom, that takes up a whole lot of your downtown east. What about some big box retailer with a huge parking lot out front, or storage facilities, or fast food chains? And so, which the community has specifically said they didn't want. So there's, you know, there's some big stuff that wouldn't really have the advantages, I think, that the community was looking for out there. And working with staff, I've worked on some of the kinds of language that we had before about what we don't want in places, including gas stations, including convenience stores with gas, and drive-throughs are not permitted. They're not permitted in other areas, and I think this would be a good place to say they're not permitted here. And then, crucially, if we also add to the livable communities element under Goal 3, Wyomama Downtown East, that standalone commercial uses are limited to 40,000 square feet per structure. Now, why 40,000? Well, because in other rural areas, commercial uses are allowed up to 40,000 square feet. So this keeps it in scale with rural areas, allows commercial uses that would be under up to 40,000 square feet, just like the other rural areas. And that would help to ensure that we don't get some giant open storage thing for builders and contractors hanging out there that's not employing anybody. And then, we would have to also add to the future land use on page 19 of the packet description of the Wyomama Village Residential 2 in two places, under the maximum FAR or square feet, say the same thing. Standalone commercial uses are limited to 40,000 square feet per structure, just like other rural areas. And then, under typical uses, say commercial, except as limited by the Wyomama Community Plan. And that we can have commercial, but it's not anything goes, and it will fit in that rural designation. So that's some language I got from staff. Before I make that motion, let me just confirm with Melissa, is, am I saying this right? Is there anything you would add or subtract from that? Melissa Zornita, sorry.
That's okay. Yes, Commissioner, that's correct, and I don't have anything to add.
Okay, that's my motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized. Did you want to speak to this motion or just, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing no further comments, can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Smith, you're still on.
Yes, and I am very happy with this. I think we did the yeoman's work at the transmittal hearing on this one. And again, I would thank staff for all their hard work on making this something we can all be proud of, and thank the Commissioners as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to, before we move there, I want to confirm, because when we talked about agricultural uses and we did that amendment...
Yeah, I was trying to find it. I've been searching for it.
Yeah, we did the amendment with regards, just wanted to make sure, because it was in the Land Development Code Section 6.11, Community Farm, that's where I was reading from anyway, and that that would apply then as well to Wyomama. Is that correct?
That section applies both to RP2 and Wyomama, so by amending that section with this clarification that it was not intended to be solely for RP2, I believe that motion will be sufficient.
Great, thank you. And with that, Commissioner Overman?
So I was going in the same place, and I was also going to ask about in the Development Code, is the reference to the 250-feet buffer, I don't know whether or not that's an issue here, because this will actually have greater density in its area, and there would be more residential in it as opposed to BOM. But the language that we actually modified for the last item does not match, and so are we, is there any interest in having that be consistent across that rural area? And that's why I wanted to kind of have a discussion on whether or not the agreed language that we proposed for the BOM area regarding the 250-foot...
You mean regarding ELAP lands?
Yes.
I think that goes across both.
For the ELAP setback language, it is the same language, but it is discreet in both documents.
Right. I found it on page 35, and that's why I was like, it's specifically referenced, and that's why I wanted to ask. So it is specifically referenced in this particular plan as well.
Yes.
But it no longer matches what we approved in the last, it took me a while to find it. I was like, I know it's in here somewhere. But it doesn't match the last approval that we just did for the BOM area. Is there interest among the board to make the language consistent for the entire rural area, WRB2? Okay, so I would like to make the motion.
Second.
That it's consistent with the previous.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and is there any further discussion? I think we had quite an extensive discussion with the first time. I don't know if anyone would like to comment on this at this time. I don't see anybody. So can we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And do we have Commissioner Overman? Okay, so it looks like we have, at this time, no one else who wants to raise any comments or questions about this. So we can entertain a motion at this time, a motion to approve.
I'd like to move second.
Commissioner Smith, and...
Approval.
Seconded by Commissioner Overman, and at this time, seeing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote? Should we have a drum roll first?
That takes me honest, seriously.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Emphatically, yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Absolutely, yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And as well, we need a vote to approve the ordinance adopting the Land Development Code Amendment. Would you like to, Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Okay, and Commissioner Overman's second on that, seeing no further discussion.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I think we should go join the block party down in Wyomama. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I think we'll have to take the vote first.
Yes, once we take the vote, once we take the vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
That is excellent. My, my. And I just, as well, just like to say that the citizens of Wyomama did an incredible job, the citizens of BOM did an incredible job. I heard one of the citizens just say that she felt as though she knew the whole, the comprehensive plan very well, and I was like, wow. But you can tell that that's true. People have worked on it very, very hard, and as Commissioner Smith said, I think this is the beginning of a new and different era for Wyomama and BOM, because I think we're very keyed into their, this board is very keyed into the needs, desires, and what we need, the work we need ahead of us to do to make those better places in Hillsborough County to live and grow. And so, we look forward, I think we're adjourning now, but we know there's a lot of work to be done.
Let's thank the staff, because they've done an amazing job.
Do we need to move overall?
Did we forget something?
Do you just make a motion and approve the Land Development Code?
That's what I believed we just did, the second one.
Did you receive that, Madam Clerk?
The first one was for the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, CPA 2012 and CPA 2013. And the second one was for a vote to approve the ordinance adopting the Land Development Code Amendment, LDC 21-0289. We want to check it three times if we need to.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we got it done.
And I think you're right, too, that staff has worked, I know, very, very hard on this. The community's worked very hard, and we have been through a lot with this. Some people called it painful. I think Ms. Gutierrez called it challenging. That was a very good way of putting it. So with that, I'll just say, the ordinance for adoption of the LDC 21-0289 shall become effective upon the effective date of CPA 20-13. And with that, we will stand adjourned.
Woo-hoo.